Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Uniontown's regular city council meeting to order November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call?
Mr. Gaddy?
Here.
Mr. Pusaki, Mr. Colombo, Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gerke?
Here. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a regi- and justice for all.
It is with mixed emotions we say goodbye to a police chief that gave so much of himself. Chief Cox, I thank you for your selfless service and dedication to the city of Uniontown. I thank all of the candidates for making my decision, one of which I had to ponder, dwell, and pray. With that, we welcome to the city of Uniontown a new chief of police, D.J. DeWitt. D.J. is a man of honor, humility, and integrity. He is a man who I trust to protect and serve the city in every sense of the phrase. To D.J., protecting and serving isn't simply a phrase, it's a way of life for him and for all of our city officers. At this time, I welcome D.J. DeWitt as the next chief of police in the great city of Uniontown. Any comments on agenda items? Chief Cox, do you have anything to say, sir?
Sir, you can pretty much sum it up best. Tonight isn't my farewell, but I will be attending my resignation here in the near future. And maybe Uniontown Police Department probably in December. I'm excited for how it will be.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The mayor pretty much said it all. I'm excited, as the police chief in Uniontown, to turn the reins over to Corporal D.J. DeWitt. This isn't my farewell meeting yet, I will be here next month and plan to retire toward the end of December. I really applaud the mayor and the effort he put forth in putting a criteria together to make his selection. I think D.J. is a wonderful officer. I've had the opportunity to work with not only D.J., but the officers that he surrounds himself with, and I know that he'll be successful in his endeavors. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief.
Monthly report of the treasurer?
Ms. Hodge?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Last month, during the council meeting, I was unable to attend. However, I provided my report two days before the scheduled meeting. However, you declined to accept my report because it was slated I failed to reconcile the tax clearing account. I've attached the letter from the deputy treasurer who served under the previous treasurer indicating what information was provided. Also attached is a monthly report from October two thousand nineteen that shows what the previous administration had provided to council. Please note that the previous administration never attended meetings, however, all his reports were accepted. And since I have became the treasurer, I have added additional information which my staff have agreed that it would be imperative for you to review. As you can see, it's a real big packet of information. This month, I was able to reconcile the tax clearing account before this meeting. Unfortunately, the payroll reconciliation has not been completed since April of two thousand twenty-one. As we begin to prepare for the upcoming year, as you know, in March of this year, I requested council to vote to change the software for tax collection, and it was approved, and unfortunately, a week later, my request was rescinded. That being said, I am here once again asking council to authorize the purchase of a new server and software for the two thousand twenty-two tax collection. Upon speaking to the state Tax Collection Association and other tax collectors within Fayette County, the server and software for tax collection is very important. It's a valuable access to collect the process, and since we have continued to have problems, I'm asking that we address this issue during the budget preparations. In the budget of two thousand twenty-one offered to me by the city, there were line items that had adequate funds to cover the server and software. Also, there was a line item within the city treasurer's office for an independent legal counsel for treasurer's office. I am requesting that a legal counsel be obtained, and this will help alleviate the city solicitor from being in the crossfire of any conflict of interest that relates to my office. If there is not a line item in the budget, my question would be why? Historically, in a prior budget, I was able to review, there were line items in there that helped with previous administration, and I'm wondering if we could go ahead and provide the policies and procedures of how it can be added and if it was removed. In my closing, I am putting my request in writing as to make it official and put it on record that my office cannot do the citizens of Uniontown justice if my request keeps being dismissed. It's very hard because we have so much information coming into the office, and we are trying to reconcile, we're trying to make sure that the school district gets their collections and everything possible for us to move forward. So, we need the help of council and the mayor to be able to move forward for two thousand twenty-two. Does anyone have any questions? I know this report, I wanted to send it to you in email like I did last month, but I was waiting for some things to come through before I could be able to send it to you. But there's the profit and loss statements, there is the monthly reports that come in, it's also the reconciliations to tell you which ones have been reconciled. There's only one that has not been reconciled, and that's payroll. So, if any of the council would like to discuss it further, just let me know, and we can go through that. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the report of the treasurer for the month of October two thousand twenty-one, be and the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Shuhon?
No.
Mr. Gaddy?
No.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular council meeting and the October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one special council meeting, be and the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to adopt ordinance number seventeen thirty-one, bill number seventeen fifty-two, and ordinance of the city of Uniontown, Fayette County, Pennsylvania prohibiting certain permanent and temporary obstructions to streets, alleys, sidewalks, and public rights away, regulating the same, providing for permitting of the same, establishing a permit procedure and fee, establishing an effective date, and repealing other inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
I will point out on that one for the record, we did hold the public hearing prior to this meeting, and there was no public comment on that particular ordinance, so just wanted to note that as well.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to introduce bill number seventeen fifty, proposed ordinance number seventeen thirty-two, and ordinance of the city of Uniontown, Fayette County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania electing to amend its non-uniform pension plan administered by the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System pursuant to Article Four of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law, agreeing to be bound by all provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipal Tax Retirement Law as amended and as applicable to member municipalities. It is hereby ordained by Uniontown City, Fayette County as presented, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular council meeting of city council on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. A full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance number seventeen thirty-two is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to introduce bill number seventeen fifty-three, proposed ordinance number seventeen thirty-three, and ordinance of the city of Uniontown, Fayette County, Pennsylvania showing the estimated receipts, expenditures, and liabilities of every kind of all the funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, with the balance of unexpendative appropriations as the basis for fixing the levy and tax rate for said fiscal year, appropriating and authorizing expenditures of the various amounts shown as proposed expenditures herein for the expenses of the city for said fiscal year from the revenue available for said fiscal year for the departments and specific purposes set forth herein, and the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of city council on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. A full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance number seventeen thirty-three is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to adopt ordinance number seventeen thirty-one, bill number seventeen fifty-two, and ordinance of the city of Uniontown, Fayette County, Pennsylvania vacating a portion of an unnamed twenty-foot alley located in the city of Uniontown, County of Fayette. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
I will point out on that one for the record, we did hold the public hearing prior to this meeting, and there was no public comment on that particular ordinance, so just wanted to note that as well.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to introduce bill number seventeen fifty, proposed ordinance number seventeen thirty-two, and ordinance of Uniontown City, Fayette County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania electing to amend its non-uniform pension plan administered by the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System pursuant to Article Four of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law, agreeing to be bound by all provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipal Tax Retirement Law as amended and as applicable to member municipalities. It is hereby ordained by Uniontown City, Fayette County as presented, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular council meeting of city council on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. A full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance number seventeen thirty-two is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to introduce bill number seventeen fifty-three, proposed ordinance number seventeen thirty-three, and ordinance of the city of Uniontown, Fayette County, Pennsylvania showing the estimated receipts, expenditures, and liabilities of every kind of all the funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, with the balance of unexpendative appropriations as the basis for fixing the levy and tax rate for said fiscal year, appropriating and authorizing expenditures of the various amounts shown as proposed expenditures herein for the expenses of the city for said fiscal year from the revenue available for said fiscal year for the departments and specific purposes set forth herein, and the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of city council on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. A full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance number seventeen thirty-three is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Yeah, like each year, we do a little budget summary. Of course, it doesn't include everything, but some of the, some key points in, you know, regards to the general fund sewage fund and off-street accounts. So, general fund revenue-wise, we're looking at police services, Persian Corps Patrol, twenty-six thousand, Sheepskin Trail Patrol, which is a thing we have with South Union Township, generating thirty thousand dollars. Booking center revenue, that's supposed to be, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the switch from HSA to HRA, health insurance adjustment, saved us fifty thousand dollars. The expenses that come with that are seven percent increase for health insurance for non-uniform fire, three percent salary increase is non-uniform, three point zero five percent increase is firemen, three point five percent increase police. Thirty-five thousand dollars for the comprehensive plan, we're getting going there for the future. Twelve thousand zero-turn buildings and grounds, five thousand dollar Taser leasing, twenty thousand dollar roof, central air, washer, front apron fire department, the capital outlay, and, I'm sorry, thirty-five thousand dollars for capital outlay, a hundred thousand dollar booking center expenses, and thirty-four thousand five hundred city event expenses. Couple more things here from the sewage fund, budgeted for two new Public Works employees with benefits. They're shorthanded there, three percent salary increases, seven percent increase for health insurance, hundred and two thousand for construction and miscellaneous breaks, thirty-three thousand major equipment down payment for small dump, plus nine other payments. And then off-street, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new pay station equipment. So, just a few of the key points there that involve the budget. Of course, there's a lot more goes into it than that, but just some overview of some of the expenses and the salary increases, et cetera.
Mayor Gerke?
No.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to introduce bill number seventeen fifty-four, proposed ordinance number seventeen thirty-four, and ordinance of the city of Uniontown, County of Fayette and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the salaries payable by the city of Uniontown for the various positions enumerated herein for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith, and that the amount herein after set forth opposite the positions herein after enumerated be and the same or hereby fixed as the salaries payable for said positions by the city for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of city council on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. A full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance number seventeen thirty-four is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to introduce bill number seventeen fifty-five, proposed ordinance number seventeen thirty-five, and ordinance of the city of Uniontown, County of Fayette and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the real estate tax rate for all city purposes for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith. Section One, the tax B and the same is hereby levied on all property within the city subject to taxation for the city purposes for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two pursuant to the computation of real estate tax levy as attached heretofore and labeled Exhibit A as follows. A, for recreation purposes, the sum of point two eight seven five two three mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, point zero two eight seven five two three cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. B, for library purposes, the sum of point seven two zero six four two mils of each dollar of assessed valuation, point zero seven two zero six four two cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. C, for general purposes, the sum of eleven point two two six eight four mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, one dollar and one two two six eight four cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, reflecting no change in the tax levy, twelve point two three five mils for two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to hire Trey Reckenberg as a full-time firefighter for the city of Uniontown at a salary of thirty-six thousand dollars annually effective December sixth, two thousand twenty-one for probationary period, pending medical and psychological evaluation, and upon successful completion of nine hundred and sixty regular working hours, Mr. Reckenberg will then be entitled to health and welfare benefits. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, this hire is due to our current fire chief is, Buck Griffith is retiring at the end of this year, so that's why we need to hire another firefighter. Thank you, yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of garage doors and a manual door at an approximate cost of two thousand dollars for the shed building situated on fenced-in property at Bailey Park for the purpose of storing all lawn equipment used for the summer grass-cutting season for parks and recreation. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize a check fee issued to Fayette friends of animals and pigs and pets in the amount of a hundred and fifty-three dollars each from donations received by the city of Uniontown from the city's parade event. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize payment of five hundred dollars to DJ Audio Force Entertainment for the city of Uniontown home for the holidays event. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for gasoline fuel for all city vehicles for two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown, council does hereby adopt the analysis and recommendations of the city representatives as summarized in the October eighteen, two thousand twenty-one letter of Attorney Randall Rhodes for a new investment manager custodian for the city of Uniontown fire and police pension plans, and authorizes the mayor to enter into such documentation as may be necessary or helpful to engage Huntington Bank for the pension-related work on behalf of the city and the city's staff, and representatives are hereby authorized to take such actions as are necessary or helpful to engage Huntington Bank and transition the responsibilities from First National Bank to Huntington Bank. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Oh, I have.
Monthly reports, Uniontown Code Enforcement Officer, Mr. Thomas.
Hey, good evening. Started out the month with fifty-two total code cases. I closed a total of twenty-three. We have opened, carried into November, thirty-eight cases, and I had eleven new complaints which I logged in. So, every month, the backlog keeps coming down a little bit, we're chipping away at it little by little. In addition, something new's been added to the report. I've written this year, and I've become a little more aggressive with it since midsummer. I've been here starting in June, a year. So, I figured in a year's time, if you haven't figured out what you need to do to be consistent with the codes and ordinances of the city of Uniontown, you should have figured it out. So, I've started writing sweep violations. So, for the year, I've written a total of thirty-one totaling fifteen hundred and fifty dollars. Of that fifteen fifty, eight hundred and fifty has been paid. The balance is at the magistrate, waiting for the next process. In October, I wrote fourteen sweep violation tickets. Of that totaling four, seven hundred dollars, I'm sorry, of that seven fifty was paid, or three fifty was paid. So, I wrote seven hundred, and three fifty has been paid, so three fifty obviously went to the magistrate for further disposition. So, we're kind of growing the program as time goes. Any questions?
I'm in here.
All right, hey, thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Uniontown Fire Department Monthly Report, Joe?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Fire Department for the month of October answered seventy calls. Seven of them were fire-related. Four were rescue and extrication events, twenty-four motor vehicle accidents, five hazardous conditions, eleven public service calls. They had fifteen false alarms, and four, they conducted four fire drills throughout the city. So, that was a total of seventy calls. In addition to that, four hundred and thirty-seven man-hours were spent on training, and that was training, seventeen participants took advantage of that training.
Thank you, Joe. Police Department Chief Cox?
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens. Just quickly to touch base on Code Enforcement, Matt Thomas's report. As he said, he issued sweep tickets that amounted to $750, but only 350 was paid, so that means about 50%. What happens when those tickets aren't paid? He then meets with either myself or another police officer, and those tickets then transition themselves into what's called a state citation, a non-traffic citation, which is then filed at the magistrate's office. Once that happens, then a hearing is scheduled, and then they have their day in court in front of magistrate Metros. I just say that because I know that sometimes it's frustrating because we want to see results happen quickly, we want to see grass cut quickly, homes cleaned up quickly, but unfortunately, the wheels sometimes turn slowly, but Matt's doing an excellent job with the tools and resources that he has. Onto policing. Mayor, during the month of October, the Uniontown Police Department responded to 731 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls includes 26 vehicle accidents, eight assaults, 11 criminal mischief, 12 disturbances, 32 domestics, four drug offenses, four fire calls, 12 harassments, two public intoxications, 14 disorderly conducts, 15 emergency medical assists, 23 shots fired caused, five overdoses with Narcan administered, 44 suspicious activities, nine suspicious persons, 20 thefts, and served nine warrants. Officers made a total of 24 criminal arrests, issued 11 non-traffic citations, and eight traffic citations. Officers also conducted numerous vehicle, foot patrol, and bicycle patrols along the Sheepskin Trail and in areas, various areas within the city limits. As I said earlier, tonight is not my farewell, but my farewell will most likely be next month, and I'll be turning the podium over to Corporal DJ DeWitt to take over my position. Excited to have Corporal DeWitt here, and I just want to ask him to come up to introduce himself quickly.
Mayor, council, thank you for your vote of confidence in me and affording me the opportunity to serve this great city without resigning. It's an absolute honor to me. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Chief Cox and the rest of our administrators and command staff, and officers for that matter, for the absolute extreme, I mean, the ability that our guys have is second to none, I believe, and I would fight that battle all day. And a lot of that goes back to our command staff and Jason and the city allowing him to build a department to get us to the point that we're at. In 10 years, this agency has grown to the point where we have the most community interaction that I've ever had, and I look forward to continuing to serve the citizens in that capacity and continue to grow the relationships that we have so we can push our city forward in a much better direction than what the past that we've had. Again, I thank you for you guys, for everything, and thank you for your time, and I look forward to serving the citizens. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Corporal. Director of Public Works, Mr. Paul Alinsky.
For this month, the total sewage collection was $199,865.74. Regarding the sewage, our Jetter truck, sadly, we just recently paid it off in October, and now it's broke down. It's actually inoperable at the moment, but luckily, we have South Union come to our rescue, and it seems like I've been bothering them more since the truck's been broke down than when our truck was working. But luckily, they've been very responsive and able to come to our calls whenever we need them to help with different issues in the sewer system. The compote site, we got the Beast Mulcher back. We put it through its paces over the past two weeks, and luckily, it seems like the $60,000 repair was well worth it, and it's operating to full potential now, and we'll be running it full force for the rest of the year here to get caught up with all the material we have. In the street department, we, the street sweeper is back, and it's operational for now at least. They've been out mostly all day, at least two to three days a week, trying to clean up the areas for everything that's behind. They've been suiting up the plow trucks, getting ready for winter. It is, it is pothole season now with the weather changing, and they are trying to keep up with those as well as they can. Recently, we did get the building down at Bailey Park, and we're in the process of getting that cleaned up. It looks like a little mess down there now, but it'll be cleaned up before the end of the week is over here. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paul Alinsky. Uniontown Community Development Coordinator, Mark John, is unavailable to be here this evening, and he had given me his report to read, so I'll do that now. His Bailey Park updates. We thank the redevelopment authority of the City of Uniontown for reallocating the necessary funds to get lights back to Bailey Park's baseball field. Those funds will ensure the old and failing concrete light pole pads will be torn out, new concrete pads will be poured, the lights will be retrofitted with LED lights, the poles will be stood back upright. We anticipate bids for this work to go out after the December meeting, which would allow approvals of bids at the January meeting. It is our hope and our goal to have light standards for high school baseball season. This is dependent on how quickly all entities can work together and pull resources from each other. Number two, structures at Bailey Park have been cleared to make room for the proposed soccer fields. Thank you to Johnny and his crew for their continued work on this and many other projects around the city. Number three, thank you to Bright Stripe for coating the tennis courts and pickleball courts. It is our hope to have nets up for both in the spring of 2022. Number four, we are confident we will receive grant funding for at least half of the cost of construction of a splash park at Bailey Park. Should we acquire the majority of the funding, we plan on conducting an event to generate the remaining balance. If all proceeds is planned, we expect to begin soliciting bids for the construction of the splash park in the spring of 2022. The proposed site of the splash park at Bailey would be in the corner of the fenced-in parking lot and close to the playground and basketball courts. Number five, thank you to Boar Signs for their remarkable job on the newly hung Dicey Simon Little League Field. Mr. Simon's legacy is one in which our city can take great pride. Mr. Simon was instrumental in the lives of generations of city's children. Thank you, mayor and council, for finalizing the official naming of the Dicey Simon Little League Field. Thank you also, Ed and Joe, for your time spent on ensuring the sign honoring Mr. Simon was hung with honor. Economic development opportunities. Number one, we've been in contact with local farms, agricultural societies, restaurant owners, chefs, and developers in an attempt to create a fresh locally sourced market district. We feel we have enough interest in land development opportunities to proceed with initial discussions. Anyone interested in participating, please email me at mjohn@uniontowncity.com. That's mjohn@uniontowncity.com. Number two, we've recently been in contact with a local brewery who's expressed interest in coming to the city. Number three, we have been in discussion with Heinz College at Carnegie Mellon University regarding a partnership in which the city would host a cohort of graduate students to conduct a project of the city's choosing. Our meetings with CMU are in their infancy stages, so our goal to have an actual cohort in place for the fall semester of 2022. In an effort to attract developers to the city, Mr. Witt has been discussing the possibility of implementing a developers agreement in which incentives would be offered to developers, making dilapidated downtown properties attractive to rehabilitate. This would be in addition to the Lurder Tax Abatement Program. Mr. Witt, would you be so kind to provide a quick synopsis of the program that some neighboring municipalities and boroughs have already implemented? Mr. Witt?
So this is, the concept for tax delinquent properties is a lot of times the tax delinquencies on the properties is what creates a disincentive to people acquiring and then further developing and improving those properties, because in many cases, those delinquent taxes actually exceed the value of the property itself. So this would be a procedure whereby the city could approve third parties to come in and acquire and then improve properties to make them inhabitable once again, and then investing a certain amount of money into those properties in exchange for the city potentially forgiving and exonerating that property of the city's delinquent taxes. So this would be an opportunity to do that and incentivize that sort of development. That is something for council to consider as we have continued discussions with our community development coordinator as well on whether or not that would be something that the city would be interested in looking at.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Historic preservation. On Monday, November 8, 2021, the Office of Community Development met with Andrew Mishak from Cultural Sites Advocacy Group of Bedford, Ohio. Mr. Mishak specializes in finding state, federal, foundational, and private funding for historic preservation purposes. Mr. Mishak spent approximately four hours touring some of Uniontown's historical sites, some vacant, and some occupied. He is committed to assembling a team of advocates, lobbyists, and preservation enthusiasts that will help secure funding. Because of Uniontown's historic presence, her geographical location, her date of birth, and sense of pride positions us to be at the forefront of acquiring federal, state, foundational, and private funding. In the very near future, the Office of Community Development will be calling on the mayor, city council, our county commissioners, our state legislators to work cohesively toward the rebuild of our beautiful city. Stay tuned. In the meantime, please feel free to reach out to our office with any questions. Municipal Assistance Program Grant. We expect to hear from the Department of Community and Economic Development within a week whether we will be awarded this grant that will help fund the city's comprehensive plan. Community Development Block Grant. Thank you, mayor and council, for your approval of submission of this year's CDBG application. A special thank you to K2 Engineering and Dana Kendrick for your assistance with the submission of this year's CDBG application. South and Church Street Parking Garage Updates. We are in discussion with a local business that would help provide the necessary upgrades to parking equipment as well as lighting and cameras, excuse me. The discussion are preliminary, but we expect the outcome to be favorable. Sheepskin Trail Update. Number one, thank you again to K2 Engineering and Dana Kendrick for preparing and submitting the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Application. We expect the award winners to be announced tomorrow, and our office will provide an update at the December council meeting. Number two, we received a quote last week to rip up the entire stretch of railway and repave all surfaces from the South Union Township slash City of Uniontown border to Grindel Station. Thank you, Lee Plumbing and Escavating, for providing this quote. We are working on what the cost and timeline is going to be to be to acquire bid-ready plans for the construction of the city section of the Sheepskin Trail. Excuse me just a minute. We are working with PennDOT and K2 Engineering to acquire the necessary permitting and documentation needed to begin construction on the trail. If the city is awarded the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant, we must wait until that funding is distributed to begin construction. It is our understanding that funding will be distributed in the late spring, early summer of 2022. The 20% match of that grant can be used as an in-kind service. If we begin construction on any portion of the trail prior to the grant award winners being announced, we jeopardize any funding the city could receive. If the city has not awarded the funding through the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant, we have two options. Number one, apply for funding again next year and hope we can get it. If we do, construction can begin in 2023, or start all construction on our own, either bidding out the project or completing as much as we can with city equipment. Please call the Office of the Community Development at any time with any questions at 724-430-2900, extension 114, or by email at mjohn@uniontowncity.com. Thank you. Director of Planning and Community Relations Monthly Report, Ms. Kutek?
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens. Thank you for coming tonight. Just wanted to start off with a brief recap of what was happening in the city for the month of October. Our Halloween Mayhem Movie Night at the State Theater was a huge success, enjoyed by many. Some things that we do again and some things that I would change for next year, so thank you to all who made that night possible. The next day, we followed up with the Halloween Pop Parade in Story Square. Donations collected was a total of $306 to be split between Fayette Friends of Animal and Fixin' Pets. Thank you to all who participated and donated for that, for those worthy causes. Veterans Day, the American Legion Post 51 hosted the Veterans Parade in Uniontown. Many were happy to see a parade in town. Thank you to all the veterans that have served, currently serving, and in the future. Wanted to talk about our Home for the Holidays event that is happening this weekend in Story Square. Event begins at 2:30 till 5:30. Mayor will be lighting the tree at 5 o'clock. Santa will be arriving by the Uniontown Fire Department at 4. We will have Mrs. Claus and crafts and activities, as well as carolers and onstage performances. The Uniontown Fire Department will be collecting Toys for Tots. The Uniontown Police Department will be collecting coats, and Uniontown City Hall and Mayor will be collecting books, which are distributed throughout the holiday season to those in need. If you have any questions, please call my office at 724-430-2934, or email me at lkutek@uniontowncity.com.
Thank you, Ms. Kutek. At this time, it's time for public comment. Before we start, I hope everyone has read the rules and regulations that we have, that we've adopted here at the city for public comment, and whenever I call upon you, please state your name, your address, and take the position at the podium. So at this time, is there any public comment? This gentleman here?
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm sure many of you know by now, I'm Jesse Blackburn. I live over on Union Street in town here. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Corporal DeWitt. I've had interactions with him, First Amendment audits, and he's passed with flying colors every time, and everyone I know that has done that with him has said that he's respected our First Amendment rights, and I want everyone to know that I have faith in him that he's going to continue doing so. So let's welcome him. On that note, I would also like to point out, as Mr. Cox did, he has a long history with Corporal DeWitt and many of the other officers currently employed at the Uniontown Police Department. We have a right to impartiality, so anybody that faces charges can reasonably question his impartiality because of his years and years of working with these officers and his personal relationships developed with them. So just keep in mind that you can have your, you can request a fair trial in front of Mr. Cox if you ever have to face him in his magisterial position that he is now about to take hold of. I have another question regarding panhandling. I was informed, I handed some money out in my car to some guys standing along the highway. I asked them why they were standing there. They said they were told by the police, and I hope this isn't true, but I was told that they were told by the police that they cannot stand within city limits or downtown. They have to do it by the highways and outside of the city limits. I'm sure everyone knows that charitable appeals for support are First Amendment-protected, you know, things you can say. So you can ask somebody for a dollar, you can ask someone to help you up if you fall down, just like the mayor is aware of with his book drive that he's holding, which is an awesome project, and I want to commend you for that, Mayor. Another thing I have, I don't know if it's been posted or not, the proposed budget, I would like to know if it is, where I can access it, and if it has been. And one last thing, I do find it concerning that the city treasurer, she's qualified, she's run into some previous obstacles, and it seems that she's continuing to run into obstacles that others in her position have not run into, just in the general performance. And I'd like to find out why, you know, line items aren't being included, why her report hasn't been included.
Mr. Warren, you three minutes are up. Mr. Ward, your three minutes are up, sir.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Gentleman in the back?
My name is Roger Harris. I live on Union Street also, but in Fair Chance. I sent the city council a three-page document on what my grievance with a particular member of the city council, I don't know if you want me to take time to read it, it'll take obviously more than three minutes, or we could just skip through.
You have three minutes, sir.
Okay. Well, basically, it's a, everybody's familiar with the veteran banner campaign. And my family bought, we're a family of 14, of which seven of us, seven of us brothers served in the military. My youngest brother, in order to honor his brothers, he purchased seven banners from Fast Signs, and we got approved to hang those banners on seven consecutive poles, because the sequence was important to us also, on South Grant Street. And that was it. It was done. We had those banners hung, we contracted them in May, this past May 2021, and they were hung in June. So one day, in, I guess it was early October, my nephew and my brother back here, Burnell, they're both veterans, my nephew, Deonte, was on South Grant Street, and he noticed a white truck and two individuals on a pole taking or hanging a different banner in place of the one where my brother was. And he asked, what's going on? And they said, well, we're hanging this banner, and we moved yours down the street, words to that effect. So we contacted Fast Signs. Fast Signs said they had nothing to do with it. They did a little investigation, and they said it was Antoinette Hodge who had purchased a banner for her father and informed Fast Signs that she didn't need any help from them. She was going to have it hung with the assistance of the mayor's office. We contacted Ms. Hodge and, you know, didn't get any success with it. She basically said that pole was reserved for her, and we had asked her to return the banner back to the original location. She refused. I went to the mayor a couple of times, had a couple of conversations with the mayor. I had an email from Mr. Witt. We provided you a timeline of everything, how this had come about. You had mentioned in an email to me that it was your understanding that that hanging or the installation of those banners was more or less on a first-come, first-served basis. Again, our banner was hung at that location in June. Ms. Hodge's banner was, she took ours down and hung hers in, I think it was October, early October. I'm not completely sure about the exact dates, but...
Mr. Harris, your three minutes are up, sir. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
I do, but...
No, I do. I mean, where to go from here with what he just said?
Go ahead.
Oh, wait a minute. I question, how does this work? So when we're having public comments, if council needs to address the person at the podium, whether it be the person who just spoke, or me, or the person after me, we just bang the gavel and then that's it? Is that how it works?
So, so public comments is public comments. So it's not a question-and-answer session, it's not an ongoing dialogue. So if somebody presents something that then council wants to address or to direct, you know, another city official to address, then they, after that comment, could direct an official to address that?
So it's the community that's doing so?
Yeah, they would have the option of doing that.
Well, I'd like to address that last one, then.
Go ahead, Ward.
Well, it was said that it was done with the help of the mayor's office. That's you.
Did that happen? Or, I mean, what's... So, and once again, it's a, it's a very sensitive...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. It is a very sensitive situation. Obviously, you have two very valued veterans that were residents of the city that this involves, and, you know, you don't want to dishonor either of them through the process. So we do want to come to a resolution that's acceptable for everybody. I have requested information, and the Harris family was very helpful in providing that information. I have also requested information from the city treasurer, and she was also very helpful in providing that information. I've also requested information from Fast Signs, and they were also very helpful in providing that information. Unfortunately, it's inconsistent conflicting information. So that's why at this point, we have to parse through what's been provided to hopefully come to an outcome that is acceptable to everybody. Based on just my initial review of everything, the actions that were taken here at the city's end, because once again, this is not a program that is exclusively implemented by the city. But to the extent that the city has had any involvement, the mayor's understanding was that any signs or locations would be moved with the consent of anybody whose signs were already located there. So that's one of the things that we need to then figure out and to come up to some sort of a resolution. Once again, this was all presented to me last week, and I found out some of that information throughout the week last week. So at this point, now we have everything to parse through and then hopefully come up with a resolution that is acceptable to everybody. Once again, trying to continue to honor everybody's memory and their service here as city residents.
Can I say one more thing? One thing that there is no conflict, and it's dueable, is that our banner was hung first.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
It might have, I don't want to interrupt you, but if I could make a clarification, our banner was supposed to be hung at the pole. We did not have a picture. No, can I finish, please? Let me finish.
Natalie, hold on a minute.
Yeah, so, so go ahead. If you wanted to finish stating just, if there was anything else you wanted to say.
It was my dad's flag, and I just want to apologize to my dad.
Do you want to provide public comments as one of the people?
Why don't we have... I just want to comment on what's...
Sure, just, just so we keep it orderly here.
We're going to keep some order. I had called Ms. Hodge. I'll call you up next, sir. Okay? Very good.
My other comment, my only comment was, and it's dueable, ours was hung first.
And, did I finish?
Yes. Just state your name and your address.
My name is Natalie Hodge Winfrey, and I live at 19 Shady Lane in Union Town, PA. My father's son was supposed to be hung where it is hung now. We did not have a picture, and we notified Fast Signs. They were waiting on a picture from the VA. In the midst of all that, my father had passed away, and we started looking for photos and pictures. That's how we developed the picture. Before any Afro-American's picture was hung in this city, they was looking for pictures. And I said, my father's son's going to be hung, we just can't find a picture. We could not find a picture. That's why his photo was not hung there. And we had to wait until we found a picture, and the only reason why we actually found one, he passed away. But Fast Signs was waiting on the VA to forward them a picture, and we didn't have a picture yet. That's why his picture wasn't hung at the time, until he passed away, and we were searching for photos. So if you wanted direct information, Antoinette didn't pay for it, I paid for it. So don't make accusations, ask questions.
One at a time, please.
My name is Burnell Harris. I live at Tap Avenue in Union Town. She can sit here and say all she wants about a picture not being, not being developed, and yell and scream all you want. You sound like you're yelling at me. I know a yell when I see one. So we asked the mayor for answers, answers that we never got. Today, it looked like we got, it looked like they're still working on it, but Fast Signs had already told us that they had nothing to do with what the Hodge's did about that sign. And that we were, we were the first one there, we paid for the time we ordered the sign. And what I'm hearing today is conflicting to everything, everything else that's been said, and everything else that I know that I hope that you got. And so we're still for resolutions.
I'd like to respond to the Harrises. Okay?
Hold on just a minute.
I just want to get on record that I did not instruct anybody. My name, again, is Joe Chuhan. I'm one of the city councilmen. I never directed anybody to put up signs or to take any signs down. I just want to get on record that I had nothing to do with that. Okay? Mr. Harris?
Did anyone come from the city?
I don't know. I don't know how all that started. I'm just letting you know that I had nothing to do with it. I just wanted to get on record that I had nothing to do with telling anybody where to put up signs or where to take them down. And I'm sorry that happened.
Okay. Can I just say, for the record, my name is Deion. I think so, my dad's flag is the one that we moved. At no point are we blaming the city or anything else. We believe this is somebody abusing their power, okay? When it comes to first-come, first-served basis, I've submitted Mr. Timothy Witt's, and my family submitted him with a receipt from us purchasing, paying for it on 5/21, and I also submitted him with a receipt of Ms. Antoinette Hodge paying for hers, ordering it on 9/9, and purchasing it, paying for it on 9/15, 9/60. Which month comes first? This should be a cut and dry issue. This should be a very cut and dry issue. And that's all I can say. We're going to go out, who was there first? Let's look at the receipts. As she did say, she tried to order the sign earlier, but Fast Signs informed me that they never put a deposit down. They never paid any money on it. So to them, that wasn't a contract. If you don't have any money down, if you don't put down a deposit, you don't have a contract. And I think that's where the problem lies at. They waited until they received the photo before they supplied the money to pay for it, which I can understand if you feel as though you reserve something. I can understand you feeling as though it's reserved, but by law, you don't have a contract until you put a deposit down. And that was the issue. Deposit, deposit, and the money wasn't received until September 15 for September 60. I do have that documented, straight from Fast Signs.
I understand that there's seven brothers in a row...
Right.
...on these poles.
Right.
I don't understand the significance of the one pole, like why?
He asked for it to be...
Well, that's what I mean, in order, but why would you, why would you want to break that up?
We know...
There's a lot of poles, isn't there?
We know what it breaks it up, but I think this is an issue of somebody wanting their flag...
No, that's what I'm saying. Why would it break up? I mean, you have the brothers.
Because if you're hanging your flag in front of your house...
Doesn't make any sense.
And I think every citizen in Union Town would love to go outside and see their flag in front of their house, but we don't have the authority, or we don't, we don't feel as though we have the authority. So I just believe this was some misuse of authority to get something done that you wanted done, that everybody would love to have done. I mean, don't get me wrong, I would love to walk outside my front door and see my uncle's and my dad's, but it just wasn't the case. And I think that's where this incident came in, that somebody abused their power to get something done in front of their door. And like I said, I don't think it was intentionally, until she ordered it from Fast Signs and asked Fast Signs not to hang it, she would have somebody from the city hang it. Because to my understanding, all the poles that was hung out here was contracted and pretty much done by Fast Signs. And that was an indirect order to have them print you out a banner and tell them that the city would hang it. Now, do I think the city was involved in all it? No. I think it was something underhanded they done. And that's just my personal opinion. But all we want is the signs to be back in order, because we were informed this is a first-come, first-served basis. We went to this Veterans Day, where my dad signed in the wrong place. And I just think it's a, it's a dishonor to a Vietnam vet, as we all do know, Vietnam is one of the worst wars the US ever had, and we lost so many troops in that war, and my dad was fighting front end. He's a part of a recon. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other comments this evening? Kendall?
My name is Kendall Sissler. I am a resident of the City of Union Town. I have a business here in the City of Union Town. I sit on the Redevelopment Authority and the Union Town Downtown Business District Authority. I am wanting to address the position of the Director of Planning and Community Relations. I am going to read quickly, as quickly as I possibly can, the job description. So it is, manage City of Union Town community initiatives, events, communications, and other projects and programs. Prepare materials for distribution to city officials, staff, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. Oversight aspects of social media and website management. Conduct event planning and public relation initiatives and serve as a liaison with local businesses, nonprofit organizations, and residents for city projects and initiatives. Pursue partnerships or funding opportunities that may assist city businesses, nonprofit organizations, and residents. Assist and inform the mayor, city council, city clerk, and staff as needed. Handle inquiry responses as assigned by city council. Attend and be involved at related public meetings and represent the city at such meetings. Such additional management and community development administrative duties as may be assigned by city council. Okay, that is what we are not getting from her. And this is in complete and total effort to move forward and for that issue to be addressed, the number of issues that are growing. For example, from the DBDA, we have a responsibility to the merchants downtown to make sure that their needs are being met and that we are bringing business downtown to them. The Halloween event last year was a smash hit, 2020. This year, that was never visited, we never had the option of doing that. We, the mayor directed the, directed us that the, that Laura would be attending our meetings for the DBDA, which completely falls under your job of, job description. We don't see her there, she's not communicating with us. In fact, it's turned into a very divisive situation. The Home for the Holidays event, that I'm sure is going to be amazing, it started out as being a collaborative effort between she, the city, redevelopment, DBDA, and local community members. It was, from my understanding, a very positive meeting, everyone was very enthusiastic about it, everyone was willing to work together. Two days later, someone gets a call that the city doesn't want to step on the toes because of the redevelopment authority since we own that property in the square. All of her other events are held in the square, and we don't ever feel like she's stepping on our toes, the more the merrier. We're not being worked with properly. Our event, that four-day event, starting the 27th of November through the 18th of December, is going to be put on every Saturday. We have people working their butts off in this community. Business owners, patrons, community members, people from South Union Township are even volunteering to help. Nonprofits in the city and out. The city has never once promoted that event, and we're doing it together. It's turned into a competition. It shouldn't be a competition. It's not a competition on our end, it's a competition on yours, and I think that needs to change.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you. I'd like to address that for a minute, too, please. You brought up a lot of points in, in your talk. I don't know where the disconnect is, or in your point of what you're talking about, but I just wrote down a few things here, just in passing, of what we've done, what the, what Ms. Kutech has done in the past six months.
But we're not talking about what she's done for the city. We're talking about how her lack of willingness to...
That's an opinion, okay?
No, it's not an opinion, Mayor. Her job, did you just, can I re-read the job description?
Yes, and I believe that she's fulfilling that job description.
Okay, so we, as Downtown Business District Authority and the Redevelopment Authority, I'm not speaking for all of us with several...
I know you're not, okay?
But we don't feel that way.
So I think, I think, if I don't mind my interrupting, if there's a disconnect there between, you know, what the expectation is either on the city and/or the Downtown District Authority, perhaps a separate meeting just to address that issue may be appropriate.
Okay, that would be fine.
Well, why don't you say, I feel like after what I just said, it wouldn't, it shouldn't necessarily be an immediate defensive comeback. I would, I, my understanding would be, okay, let's meet up, we want to hear your concerns, we want to work together, what could we do better, how could you guys do better? That's what our goal is. But immediately, it jumps to defense, and that is a perfect example of why we're here tonight, because it should be a defensive thing.
I think you started the defense though first.
I think, I think, I think the, I think the concern, so anytime that there's any, you know, criticism of the city or an employee of the city, you know, we have to understand that there is a lot going on that is positive, and so we do want to emphasize that it's not all negative.
Tim?
And, and that we want to obviously come to a resolution of it, too. So that's why I recommend having a separate meeting to address that specific issue. I understand, I understand what you mean.
Okay.
But that's what I think needs to happen to move forward at this point, so.
Do we have any other comments this evening? Yes? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Yeoman. My address is 37 West Main Street, Uniontown, Pennsylvania, where I own a business. I brought, came prepared, because I can be very long-winded, and I wanted to make sure I stay within my three minutes. So, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to express my concerns surrounding the newly, I'm a little behind here, but newly created positions here at City Hall. The Director of Planning and Community Relations, and what I thought was the Director of Economic Development, but I believe it's some planning or community development. This past September, I was informed of the salary these positions are making, and that they also include medical benefits. I had no idea that the city was in a financial position to cover these costs. I do understand that the CDBG grant funding will cover the economic development position moving forward, but I'm perplexed to why we are spending a management-level salary on an event planning role, when our community is full of volunteers capable of putting on events at no cost to the city. I also have to question why the Director of Planning and Community Relations consistently has Mayor Gerke acting as the middleman between herself and us business owners. I'm having a hard time justifying $42,500 plus benefits and this person not being able to communicate. Further, I will bolster Kendall's remarks, in that this position has created a huge rift between business owners and City Hall. I will leave you with these questions that I feel the business owners of the city deserve to be answered. Does the Director of Planning and Community Relations role generate revenue for the city, or is it revenue neutral? And what is the outlook for sustainability for this position? How are you paying for it now? And how do you plan on paying for it for the future? And that is all. Thank you.
Have any other comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Kelly Trot. I live at 135 Virginia Avenue in the city. I just had two comments. My first was meeting time. I'll admit, I lived away from the city for several years, didn't follow the city council, so I don't know if it's been tried in the past, but I was just wondering if the council and mayor could consider a meeting time that's more accessible to those who work, so maybe 5:30 or 6 o'clock in the evening. Just a suggestion. It's hard for me to get here. But in the meantime, I want to extend deep gratitude for streaming the meetings, and for WMBS, and those who are sponsoring the streaming. So, thank you so much for doing that. My second comment is about Bailey Park. I am so excited to hear all the wonderful things that are coming. I love Bailey Park. I played at Bailey Park as a kid, and I'm taking my three-year-old and 18-month, 18-month year-old there regularly. But I'm very concerned that what we think is a walkway has become a road. So, there are cars going through the park regularly. I know that there's that sort of handicap-accessible parking area, I think it used to be Foursquare when I was a kid, and I know that parking's going to be reconfigured down there. And so, I understand cars are coming down the hill from the intersection of Pennsylvania and Berkeley. So, I understand maybe them coming in, but I'm requesting a barricade between that and the playground. I'm also requesting a barricade from, I think it's Jacquet Place, and, and entrance there. I have been playing at the park regularly with my kids, and, you know, I've got one on the slide and one on the swing, or run, one running to the swing, and a car comes through. I don't think cars expect people to be there, so they're not looking. I walk there, so they don't see my car. Cars have come through fast, barreling through, down to the basketball courts. So, it's just very unsettling to have my kids there. I've been to dozens of playgrounds. I can't think of one playground that has a road in the middle of it. I come to let my kids run free, and I know this has been discussed, and, and I'm grateful it's being discussed, but it still hasn't been addressed. So, I'm requesting this to be addressed immediately for the safety of our kids. Otherwise, I can't imagine anyone would play there. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Can I add something? Because I, I just, I'll take my kids and Bailey Park for the safety concerns as well, so that is going to be...
Like I said, I'm very excited about Bailey Park. I grew up there, and I think it's going to be great. I just think urgently, a barricade needs to go, to stop allowing cars to go through it. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Back to the previous comment, kind of caught me off guard, Lauren, but I, I feel a need to address you to a point, okay? And you, you questioned myself and city council on the hiring of the two hires, the 40, Mr. John and Ms. Kutek. And I, I know you alluded to how Mr. John was getting paid, and I, I agree with that. But whenever I came into office, I saw there was very little activity, if any, activity going on in the city of Uniontown. Last Halloween, last Christmas, Laura helped my wife and I with, with some activities here, and I saw the enthusiasm build. And as time went on, I, I felt a need, that the city needed someone, a full-time employee to do this job. There, there was no one stepping up at the time. You have to agree with me. Do you agree with me? There, there was no one else.
Let me see, though. I, I, my business was in Uniontown two years ago, so I don't want to...
Okay.
But I will, I think my question would be more a full-time job. That's...
Okay. Okay. It's 32 and a half hours a week, but...
Still.
Okay.
I have to...
And I, and I can tell you that that job entails much more than 32 and a half hours a week. And maybe I'm stepping over my boundaries, but I, I feel that I'm the one that brought these two jobs to the city with the support of council. We're moving forward. And, and again, before I came to the city of Uniontown, we didn't have a code enforcement officer, so that was another hire that we had, and you can see, see how that works. But we do have to spend some money to make, to improve our city. I'm not very, I'm not as eloquent with words as you are, so excuse me, but I do have some points that I'd, I'd like to bring up. We, we had our first firecracker 5K race, which was a, a big success. Our flag ceremony, whenever the flags were damaged at five corners, Ms. Kutek was instrumental in bringing that together, okay? There, there was no, she spearheaded that. Our 9/11 ceremony that we had at Story Square, and I'll go on the record, the county and the city went together to do that, but through my involvement, it was the city that put all that together. And I'm not tooting my horn, I'm tooting Ms. Kutek's horn. She won't take that, that credit for that. But the 9/11 ceremony, we went, we were invited to Carnivalsville last year. My wife and I and Ms. Kutek were invited by Mayor Lincoln, and whenever I went there, I said, "I want this done next year." And she would have done it for me if she wasn't employed. She would have done that for me. I wanted that. And, and, and if you attended that, that program, it was a huge success. Our movie night, movie marathon night, and I, I know your dad had your, had, had some of your children, Timmy's children, there, and, and they can tell you what a huge success and what a good time that was for the city. The petting, the, the dog parade, I don't know what it's called, but we had, it was going to rain, there was different changes. We were going to have the, the parade here in City Hall. We were originally going to have it at Story Square. Then it was raining that morning. We changed it to, to here. Then someone, I think, I, I, I think Matt Thomas, again, someone that, that helps us, helps her to think, we changed it to the parking garage. Then the weather changed. We moved it to Story Square. A huge success. And you can see that the Home for the Holidays, under my direction, Ms. Kutek, I had told her I wanted one large event. And may, maybe I didn't communicate myself properly. You guys are doing a wonderful job with, with Christmas in the square, but there's a lot of time that has been put into Home for the Holidays. Maybe I didn't express myself as well as I did. And of course, the Veterans Day Parade, I was with Laura the day that Rob Dory from the Veterans approached us, says, "Hey, can we bring..." It just wasn't, it made out, it sounded like that, that it was our turn to do this, but it wasn't. Rob came to Laura and I, and he asked us to do this in the city of Uniontown, and she facilitated that by having her relationship. I don't have a relationship with Rob Dory or the, or the Veterans. Laura has that relationship. I just fell into that relationship. I've, I've spoken enough tonight. Thank you.
Can I, can I...
And the prison groundbreaking, too.
Oh, absolutely. Jo, Jo, I, I just, excuse me one minute. I just jotted this down right now, and I can go on and on, what Ms. Kutek has done in the six months we're here, and I'm very offended by questioning myself and council about, about, about the jobs, okay?
That's fair, as mayor, sometimes you have to be questioned, because sometimes...
But that's fine.
But wait, and that's transparent, see, when I stood up there, there was nothing personal about me standing up there.
No, I know, I, I know it's not personal, Lauren. You and I are friends, and when we walk out of this room, we'll be friends. I was just, I was just stating some of the accomplishments that Ms. Kutek...
I know that.
Okay?
I have...
And, and the relationships that she has in the community.
And...
I, I mean, a ton of relationships that I may have, I may have facilitated, but I'm a little backward. I introduce her to these people, and she carries it to the next step. I can tell you that with every, every relationship that she has made, I've, I've started it, but she's taken it forward.
So, if you feel differently, then you're saying that, that our, our feelings aren't important, which is active as we are...
I'm not questioning, I'm, I'm, I'm just stating some facts that I have, okay?
Absolutely. So, I guess this is my next question, then, for you, Mayor, since you opened the door. Is this your priority for the, for the city, is to host events? Is that the best use of your time, facilitating events for Laura, to put on the show? I, I, I...
I, I don't understand your question.
Like, it seems like a lot of time, and you, it seems very personal to you, because there was nothing personal. I was just...
No, it's, it's all personal to me either.
I was a member of the city here.
Okay.
I, I know that Laura's been at several events. I've attended most of them. We all have. She's done videos to promote them. That's not my point.